We're going to get started in about one minute. We're so delighted to have everyone here. I don't hear myself. We would now like to call to order this Tuesday, May the 16th, 2023, School Board Work Session of the Lynchburg City School Board. And we are delighted to be here at Heritage High School and to have the opportunity to take care of some very significant acknowledgements. And so at this time, I would like to ask my colleagues on the school board, the agenda has been featured for tonight's work session, and I would entertain, like to entertain a motion to approve the agenda for tonight's work session. Is there such a motion?
We approve the agenda.
Alright, been moved by Dr. Carter, seconded by Dr. Gupta, that we approve the agenda for tonight's work session. Any further questions or discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, if you would please call the roll.
School Board Member, Ms. Preston.
Yes.
School Board Member, Mr. Tross.
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Senhai.
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Brennan.
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Coleman.
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Carter.
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Gupta.
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Day.
Yes.
School Board Member, Mr. Andrews.
Yes.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The members of the board, we will now stand and share in our pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Always so thankful for that opportunity to share and to have all of you with us here tonight, here at Heritage High School. It is my pleasure now, as we move to Section C of our agenda, to turn the floor over to our dynamic and distinguished Superintendent, Dr. Crystal Edwards.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. We are so excited to be here. I would like to welcome our students, our families. I see Delegate Walker, glad to see you here as well. Our coaches, our advisors, and all of our school supporters to our first annual student celebration. So we're trying something new this year, and we want to make it better next year. So any positive feedback that you have at the end of this ceremony, if you just send it to us, because our kids are fantastic. And you will see tonight, they have done some amazing things that require us to take a pause and just honor the work that our kids have done and celebrate those adults who helped them get there, whether that's family members, parents, staff members, siblings, all together. So that is what we intend to do tonight, and I'm grateful to our school board. We have a lot of work to do, but we never have too much work to stop and pause for our students. So tonight is about celebration for our groups that have made it to regional and state competitions, and we're looking at everything from our elementary students all the way up to our high school students and a multitude of disciplines. So not just athletics, but also Skills USA for our CTE students in arts as well. So tonight, you'll get to see some of the fabulous things our kids have done. Now, disclaimer and applause. We have some amazing talented students who are still competing as we speak. We are in the spring season for many of our things, and we're not done yet. So some of our students are not recognized tonight because they are still in the middle of a season, and they're still going to regionals and championships, and we want to wait until the season is over to honor them. So one of the things, as we think through our celebration, is how do we capture all of our students? So, school board members, we may have to do something special in June for all of the students who, as we speak, are still practicing and continuing in their competitions and their honors. So this night, I'd like to give thanks to a special group of people who helped put this together. Ms. Whitney Boyd, who is going to be our emcee tonight. She is our family and community engagement liaison. She took the lead on this and sort of took what were words and turned that, turned those words into a vision. So I'm grateful for her, I'm grateful for the help from my office, from Ms. Denise Spinner and from Ms. Carrie Cole, as well as the Communications Department, Austin Journey, and Scott, and the entire communications team. And this would not be possible without the work that the students have done, the coaches, the advisors, the parents who took students back and forth to practices and showed up every single day, and just all of those people who make a difference in a child's life. So let's take a moment to celebrate, and I'm going to turn the program over to Ms. Whitney Boyd.
Alright, good evening. Thank you, guys, for coming out tonight. So we are going to start with our elementary age student groups, and then go to middle, and then go to high school. And while they're getting set up, you guys, give yourselves a hand for coming out tonight, and parents, and students, and teachers, and principals. We really appreciate you guys coming out to support and celebrate each other. Alright, so we're going to try to get everybody in and out quickly. So the groups, as they come up, you'll be able to take a picture. Coaches, teachers, you will get a certificate for your team, and then each of the students, as you exit the stage, you guys will also get a certificate as well, because we wanted to celebrate and make sure you guys had something to take home with you. Alright, so our first group is our Darrington Elementary Virginia Day Competition Team. The teacher that headed this group was Ms. Janet Bates, and they placed third in the elementary group exhibit, and they were awarded the African-American History Prize. Alright, so our next group is the Bedford Hills Elementary Virginia Day Competition Students, and the teacher that supported them was Ms. Heather Birdcard. Alright, we've got our Dunbar Middle School Virginia History Day Competition Group. They were sponsored by Mr. Carl Losz, and they qualified for state competition this year. Alright, we've got our Dunbar Middle School Math Counts Group. Also, the teacher for them was Ms. Emily Kelly, and they competed in the Southwest Chapter Competition this year. Alright, then we have our Combined LCS Indoor Drum Line, and this comprised of students from Heritage High School, E.C. Glass High School, Sandusky Middle, Linghorn Middle, and Dunbar Middle. Head coach was Jordan Farrell, and assistant coaches was Montez Farmer and Jasmine Horsley. So they placed... And this group placed first in two different regional competitions this year. Alright, we had our Heritage High School MC JROTC Drill Team. They qualified for the MC JROTC Region Two Competition at North Forsom, and they placed third in the cuddle guard category, and their sponsors were Sergeant Eldridge and Sergeant Ness. Alright, then we had a group of science fair winners from Heritage High School, and they were able to receive various awards in different categories, some grand awards and special awards, so we want to honor them tonight as well. Alright, we've got our Heritage High School Boys Indoor Track Team. They received the honor of state champions this year. Their head coach was Don Alexander. Assistant coaches were Shawn Webb, Dwayne Morgan, Vincent Jones, and Ricky Callaway. Alright, then we also had the Heritage High School Girls Indoor Track Team. They also got the honors of state champions this year. Same head coach and same assistant coaches. Alright, then we have our Heritage High School Wrestling Team. They got the nomination of First Region Champion Winners for LCS, and their head coach is Mr. William Stanberry. Also, we want to recognize, so E.C. Glass High School Boys Varsity Golf Team. Oops. Head coach, Mr. Nate Brungat. Alright, we've got E.C. Glass High School Boys Varsity Cross Country Team. Head coach, Van Porter. E.C. Glass Girls Varsity Cross Country Team. Head coach, Van Porter. We have our E.C. Glass High School Marching Band and Color Guard. Director Russell Paul, or sorry, Paulus. So they placed first and second in all regional competitions. They were named the pep band for the Jug Bowl, and they were voted best band in the Virginia Christmas Parade. Our EC Glass High School Skills USA Students. So Angel placed first in the Crime Scene Investigations category. We've got our EC Glass School Central Virginia Science Fair winners as well. Our EC Glass High School Forensics Team. So they go regional runner-ups and super-region runner-ups this year. We have our EC Glass High School Girls Varsity Swim Team. Head coach, Emily Davis. We have our EC Glass High School, oops, Girls Varsity Indoor Track Team. Head coach, Rodney Smith. Assistant coaches, Ray Smith, Kevin Latham, Van Porter, Mike Chambers, Billy Morris, Lauren Mosley, and Deesha Best. All right, we have our EC Glass High School Boys Varsity Indoor Track Team. They placed third in region and fourth in state this year. All right, we have our EC Glass Boys Varsity Basketball Team. And they have the title of Region Forty Champions this year. And then head coach, DJ Best. Assistant coach, Jeff Jensen, Jeremy Anderson, Tim Zirkel, and Desiree Best. Our EC Glass High School Girls Varsity Basketball Team. Head coach, Cedric Jones. And assistant coaches, Barry Flood and Melvin Robinson. And I apparently missed a slot, I sincerely apologize. So we have our Heritage High School Skills USA Students. All right, well, that is the conclusion of this portion, unless I missed anything else.
Thank you. 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 Thank you.
All right, we're going to, after such a wonderful C1, we do have C2 and 3 and 4, and D1, but that was just tremendous. And so even in the aftermath of everybody being gone, let's give Lynchburg City Schools a hand for taking the time to honor and recognize these students. Members of the board, this now moves us in our work session to C2, in which we have an HR Annual License Professional Board Report. Dr. Edwards?
Yes, so this is our annual report. We do this every single year. And I know we have some new board members, so I am going to turn it over to Ms. Scott to kind of explain the process and what you're seeing here, and what the board's role is in this. Ms. Scott?
Good evening, board.
Good evening.
All right, the annual board report is a list of our current staff, our licensed staff. The board report does not include any resignations as of today. It also doesn't include any nominations, like new employees. It also doesn't include any retirements, so anybody that retired this year. So it's just a snapshot of our current licensed staff. So it's about, on this report, it's about 795 certified staff that's on this report. So it's up for your approval, because I need your approval before we can send out the contracts for school year 2324. Just wanted to also bring your attention to annual professional contract. So annual professional contract is anybody, any new employees to LCS that's worked less than three years. After they work three years, or completed three years, then they will move to a continuing contract. So annual professional is in their probationary period. Any questions so far?
All right, members of the board, I'm going to do the best I can to see everybody tonight. And so if there's someone who would like to speak, please do so. All right, Dr. Gupta has made a motion concerning C2. And second by Dr. Carter. Members of the board, is there any further questions or discussion on the motion to approve the annual report? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Scoop up member, Ms. Preston?
Yes.
Scoop up member, Mr. Tost?
Yes.
Scoop up member, Dr. Senha?
Yes.
Scoop up member, Dr. Brennan?
Yes.
Scoop up member, Dr. Coleman?
Yes.
Scoop up member, Dr. Carter?
Yes.
Scoop up member, Dr. Gupta?
Yes.
Scoop up member, Dr. Day?
Yes.
Scoop up member, Mr. Andrews?
Yes.
Motion carries eight to zero.
All right, thank you very much. We will now move to C3. And before we move to C3, we do want to, one more time, thank Delegate Walker for his presence and support of Lynchburg City Schools. Dr. Edwards, C3 Human Resources Report.
Sure, this is our regular report. And just because we are in a different location than our home spot, it's helpful to move close to the mic and speak directly rather than from the side. It's not picking up. So I am going to turn it back over to Ms. Scott, and hopefully we will be able to hear better. There is a little bit of an echo up here.
Okay, so the HR annual report consists of licensed certified staff, and it's a total of 795 staff that's on this annual board report. The, are we talking about the next?
We're on the next, sorry.
All right, the HR report. So we would like to announce the two principals for...
Oh, that's where we are. I thought you had other things on there. Wait, hold up. Let me slow a roll down before we get to that announcement. If we do not have any other nominations for any staff, okay. We do have, we did have two principal positions that were open due to recent movement of some of our staff who have moved up to EC Glass and to Dunbar. Those two principal positions were RS Payne Elementary and Desi Darrington Elementary. And we went through a process of two rounds of interviews. The first round consisted of staff members from both elementary schools, as well as administrative staff. And then the second round consisted of myself and the deputy superintendents. And I have to say, just kudos to the Round One team because we had excellent choices and very good competition for the two principal positions. So tonight, we would like to announce who our new principal of RS Payne and a new principal of Desi will be. So I will start with Darrington Elementary School. The new principal will be Mr. Jason Jambrione, who is currently the assistant principal, or one of the assistant principals at EC Glass High School. He was also a teacher leader at Fort Hill. And we're just so excited to support him in this new journey in his leadership as principal at Darrington Elementary School. So congratulations to Mr. Jambrione for that. And then the second... So congratulations to Mr. Jambrione for that. And then the second announcement is for the RS Payne Principalship. And our new principal will be Mrs. Lori McVicker, who is currently the assistant principal at RS Payne, and has also had a wonderful career in teacher leadership, formerly as an instructional leader at Bass as well. And we are also looking forward to supporting her in her wonderful journey and transition to the Principalship at RS Payne. What that does leave us is two assistant principal positions open. So our work here is not done, but I do want to say thank you to my team. I also want to extend a thank you to our current principals, who many of you may not know that, in addition to the role that they play tonight in supporting staff and supporting children, they play an instrumental role in helping and training and developing the next set of principals. So many of our assistant principals are getting on-the-job training and experiences to what the Principalship would be like, directly from their involvement in leadership in their schools with their principals. And I'd also like to thank Dr. Wodoka and Mrs. Pugh for also opening opportunities, both on the operation side and the instruction side, for our assistant principals to participate in division-wide leadership activities as well. And I think that has contributed to the quality of the principals that we, the principal candidates that we have. So congratulations to all, and HR Director, we still have work to do.
Exactly. Thank you.
All right, that has already gone public, and we're excited about those announcements, Dr. Edwards, and our outstanding team of base school principals who are leading our children forward. So thank you. No other questions or thoughts from the board. We'll now move to C4. And this will give us an opportunity, in light of decisions that have been made in City Hall around our 2324 operating budget ongoing discussion. And Dr. Edwards will tee us off with this discussion.
Certainly. So we are continuing the discussion on our 2024, 202324 school budget. City Council did vote on May 9, and their second vote will be on May 23 to finalize the city's support for Lynchburg City Schools. I wish I had news about when the state budget will be finalized. And as of today, I do not have that information. So for those of you who are listening, we receive our support and revenue from state, from city, and from federal, as the three areas that we receive. Most of our funding coming from the city and the state. And tonight, we are following up on a discussion that started at the Finance Committee meeting. So to our viewing public, many of the documents that you see in the board agenda, under Board Docs, that are labeled A through H are the exact same documents that we shared with the Finance Committee. We just put them on the public side of this board meeting, so folks could follow along in any conversation or reference to those documents. Also in Board Docs, under letter I, is a Pay Schedule Proposed. So one of the things that we will be discussing tonight, we have our 1550 pay schedule proposal. We have also modified for discussion tonight what would be a 1547 pay scale. So that is also in Board Docs, as well as the LCS Budget Fact Sheet, which was shared with LCS staff, which sort of outlines what our city request was for funding, and what the City Council has voted on on May 9, and where the difference is, so that will also factor into our discussion tonight. So our goal is for the school board, much like what we presented to the Finance Committee, will also present to the full board, is to give administration some guidance, so that we can bring back a somewhat balanced budget while we wait for the state for you. City Council has allocated funds in seven categories, so in a sense, we are balancing our budget towards those seven categories. In some instances, we have to make some adjustments, which at the Finance Committee, we talked about some of those proposals and adjustments to deal with some potential cuts that we may have to make. So for purposes of taking this back, but not repeating word for word at the Finance Committee, I am going to start with a document that is labeled H, which is the potential budget reductions, cuts. It has a color-coded pyramid on it that I would like to share with the full board. It is Document H, for those of you who have the Finance Committee packet, and for those of you who are watching. This document outlines our request, our current funding from the city, which is $40,794,923. It also outlines our request, which was in support of our 1550 plan, which is $15 an hour minimum for our classified staff. That is currently $13.11, and we are trying to get it up to 15. We also do reference living wage by the MIT Calculator for Lynchburg City. That is over $16. So this is a step in the right direction, but not a stopping point, as we continue to multi-year look at staffing and salary. The other part of 1550 in that proposal was a proposal to raise the starting teacher's salary to $50,000 a year, which would put us in a very competitive spot with our neighbors and other cities around us, but most importantly, start the journey towards giving our teachers and staff a more livable wage. Again, not a stopping point, but a journey along the way. So that was the original proposal. And in that proposal, our request to City Council was for $47,283,634. Since meeting and having a joint workshop, and having City Council vote for the first round of their vote, which was on May 9, their city support is at $39,360,355, which, from the difference between our request and the support, is about $7.9 million. So the board's work tonight is to look at that and provide the administration with guidance as to what are those things we should be looking at that we can reduce, that we can consolidate, possibly eliminate, cut in our current budget, budget requests, so that we can have a balanced budget. We also presented to the Finance Committee somewhat of an approach, which is a pyramid approach, which if you are following along in the documents, you will see at the very top of the pyramid is School Board and Central Office. And we approach this as, if we are tightening our belts and looking for reductions and cuts and consolidations, what can we do at the School Board level? What can we do at the Central Office level? What could we do at the Division level? So hence the modification from the 1550 plan, which would cost us about $6.9 million, to a 1547 plan, I'm sorry, which, the 1550 plan, to a 1547 plan, which would save us about $3 million in the total cost of that. So on our sheet is a list of possible cuts, starting at the top with the School Board, then Central Office, then the Division. Community, we have done a wonderful job of working with our community partners, and moving down to Division, School vacancies, so managing those vacancies, programs and services, other things that we pay for, as well as, very low on the pyramid, is a potential school closure. And let me just pause to say, we are in the middle of, or more toward the end of, the second part of our facility study. The first part was Dominion 7 did a facilities condition assessment of all of the infrastructure of our buildings. And we are now working with MGT, who has done a series of community meetings, and is looking at the programmatic parts of our, what goes on in our buildings. And at the end of this, probably in the summer, we will have a recommendation as to some things that we can consider moving forward. And those things could include building a new school, consolidating schools, closing schools, rezoning schools, but that will come in the summer. We really did not want to jump in front of the work that we have done with both consultants, and make any decisions on school closures at this point. However, it is on there as a consideration and a guide for the discussion tonight. So what we would like to do is kind of go over the items. Dr. Wodoka has, in addition to projecting this, we have a spreadsheet. And for the purposes of the board, we, you know, when our administrative team meet, we try to line up on things that, as a group, we agree, okay, that's an okay cut, and a reduction that I can go with, so put that on the maybe list, or this is a no for me, so put that on the no list. And I'm not sure how the board would like to have these deliberations, but the administration is certainly here to assist as we look at the various items for discussion.
All right, thank you, Madam Superintendent. I want to make sure that the board is focused on what we need to do, with the understanding that we're still waiting on our final numbers aforementioned. And that, in my mind, is that we are looking at $7.9 million deficit, in which on H, you see a composite of reductions that would total about $11.9. We don't need to go that high, but that at least gives you the best thinking of the minds of those who've been involved in the process, trying to stay as far away from the classroom as possible, all the way to the classroom. And I'm also thankful to our very capable Finance Chair, in their deliberations, they, I believe, have a recommendation that they would like to bring, and the Chair certainly will entertain the Chair of the Finance Committee for a first discussion. And then I also want to say to all of my colleagues that, however others may decide to deport themselves, we have deported ourselves in excellence from start to finish. And I know tonight, in our robust discussion, that we will continue that, as we seek to do and make the best decisions we possibly can for our children. And so, Dr. Edwards, unless there was something else that needed to be reported, I'd like to turn the floor over to Dr. Senha.
Well, if I recall correctly, I believe we recommended taking these steps as necessary, contingent on the state budget, but choosing to go with the 1547 plan. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, so the first thing that I think that the board should ponder, and of course, somebody wants to move in another direction, you can do so, is I think we're looking now at a recommendation coming from the Facilities and Finance Committee, for the board to embrace a 1547 proposal, which would reduce how much, what is that?
About $3 million.
All right, so about $3 million, which means that you would still have $4.9 to go. So we won't solve it with just that. But I would like either for the Chair or someone on the committee to give the rationale behind this recommendation.
I thought 1547 will cost us $3 million, right on top of what we have?
It'll reduce, it'll save us.
It'll save us $3 million.
$3 million from that $7.9.
From the $11.384. So if we take them, if we take the highest of the salary.
Okay.
That bottom, that third option under the 1550 plan, and we include all the other cuts, that would net us $11.8 million in savings. If we go, my understanding, then the difference is that bottom, that third option is the $6.9 million. If we go with the 1547 plan, then that reduces this total of $11.9 by $3 million. So it would be about $7.8 million, correct? Yeah.
Which would solve the problem, because?
Well, that would bring, that would, assuming the state comes in where we anticipate they'll be, then that brings us in line with the gap between what we asked for and what City Council approved. Now, there's still a little bit of a disconnect, because, and there's a lot of, I think, cross-talk between City Council and us, because they're still looking at categorical funding, and putting things into those particular silos, where we're trying, we're focusing on the full amount.
So, Dr. Senha, what we will do, once we get guidance from the board, is we're kind of looking at it, because it's categorical funding, as if it's seven separate budgets that we have to balance out. So dependent upon the guidance, some things, like if you go with School Board or Central Office cuts, or community cuts, all of that would be more in the administration, some of that would be in the administration budget. So as we look to balance out that line, things like LCS staff appreciation will come out of that, the, if you chose that, if you chose the contribution to Ed Foundation, that's in the admin budget. And then other things will balance the instruction budget as well.
Yeah.
Dr. Coleman?
Dr. Gupta?
So the logic behind, and I didn't realize that living wage was $16 an hour, so we're still doing a catch-up game. And it breaks my heart, because our hourly wage employee, I know everybody needs it, but the hourly wage needs some help in this inflationary environment. But having said that, the 47 logic to me comes because we are able to match or exceed the neighboring counties, except for one. Dr. Wodoka, correct me if I'm wrong, right?
That's right.
We'll be behind one county, and rest of the counties will be at par or above. So 47 is not pulled out from a tin ear. There's a logic behind it, sort of a middle-of-the-ground compromise under this cut, so that at least we have some way to compete. Right now, we are losing our shirt in competition in hiring teachers and retaining teachers.
Correct. Well, and keep in mind, our teachers are on salary, so their, yeah, their bottom would be 47, not the hourly $15.
Dr. Edwards, what does it take for a teacher to switch ship from our district to a neighboring district?
What does it take?
How much money, I mean?
In some cases, not, not very much, depends on the teacher or the family. We've had folks leave us for $2,000, $3,000, $5,000. We were able to, with the help of HR and some retention incentives, to offer incentives for our teachers to stay with us. But it's, it's pretty simple to move between divisions, particularly because of distance. And not all of our staff live in Lynchburg City, so some of them may actually live in the towns that are offering a little bit higher salary, which means they also save on gas.
My suggestion will be looking for guidance. And from Finance Committee, we made a recommendation to do 1547, knowing there are a lot of things in play yet. We don't have governor's budget. We don't have a City Council budget approval. You see what I'm saying? So if you go too deep right now, and things may turn out, then we need to go back in those decisions. So will that 1547 guidance suffice for today?
It would, it would. If, assuming that the other divisions do a 5%, because remember, we also are looking at the governor's, the original 5 and 5 that was proposed last year. We are looking at one county being about 47.9, another one being 48, another one being 46, and one being 45. So we're in the realm that if we did 47, that is somewhat competitive still.
And you assured last time with $50,000, there will not be a salary compression, so you'll move
Correct.
other people up. Same thing is true for 47?
Yeah, so what we did, and if you are a staff member, particularly, and you wonder, like, what does 1547 look like, in our Board Docs, there is a new item. It is labeled I. like, what does 1547 look like, in our board docs, there is a new item, it is labeled I, and there are the new adjusted pay tables for what does 1547 look like? Because we can talk about averages and increases, but for your average staff member, they really want to know, well, what does that look like in my house? So I want to find myself on what step I'm on and what would that look like next year. So we did redo all of our draft pay tables, and they are available on board docs for the public and for you all to look at, so that folks can actually see what type of increase that would be for them.
In my understanding, also with the, with the city's categorical funding, that where they appear to have made the most significant cuts is in the administration on the perception that it is top-heavy with, to quote a council member, bureaucrat over bureaucrat over bureaucrat over bureaucrat over bureaucrat, which are nurses, speech therapists, social workers, other important people who I would not call bureaucrats, but that's just my opinion.
Thank you, Dr. Sinha. So I think that what is before the board now is prior to action tonight, we were solidly behind 1550, and we still are, yet we understand the realities of what we have. And so now there's a recommendation from the Finance and Facilities Committee to change that from 1550 to 1547. It does not require a second because it is coming from a committee. If the board tonight would like to take action on that, then it would give administration direction as we reconfigure where we are and what we need to do beyond that based on a 1547. Is there any further discussion?
Yes, Dr. Brennan.
So first of all, I'd like to thank the Finance Committee and the administration for putting this information together in such a clear way and detailed way, and also I wasn't able to attend the Finance Committee, but I listened to it, and it was a terrific conversation. I think a lot of points were brought up, and a lot of questions were answered. As you remember, I'm just an English major, so I still have a lot of trouble with these big numbers. They have to be patient with me. But is it, I want to see if this is true, that our previous budget for revenue, our previous budget was about, let's say, 106 million dollars from the current year, from '23, and what it looks like, tentatively, the current budget will be 109 million for this proposed coming year. So there's about a, and I know it's not exact, but let's say it's about a $3 million difference between our current budget and what we will get. And again, those funds are coming primarily from the state. If the state does come through, we don't know they will, we're losing money from the city. But it looks like that the overall increase in revenue will be about $3 million. So my question is that, I'm totally in favor, and I agree with the board, that we should do the 1547 plan, which will save us about $3 million.
Correct.
So does that mean then, I hope that the other cuts that are on this list will not have to be made, because as an individual board member, I really have trouble with almost all of these. You know, I think that they have very important roles, particularly, I like, I think other board members think that the central office is an important group, particularly our main administrators, who have been so beneficial from the viewpoint of bringing additional revenue for?
16 million dollars.
16 million dollars for transportation, for electric buses, working with our students for discipline, all those things, so it's very important. I also have trouble with our community contributions, you know, as far as doing away with Pi, which is a partner that we've had for a long time, we tried to establish with the Education Foundation, with staff appreciation, it's only $15,000, but I think that's important for us to appreciate our staff, and it's a small amount of funds. I don't think we want to get rid of unfilled bus drivers' positions because we are short bus drivers and need bus drivers. So as I go through this list, there are not many things that I want to cut, and particularly, not particularly, but then looking at program and services, the STEM Academy, dual enrollment, early college tuition, CTE, those are important programs for the future of our students. So again, coming back to my simple question from the English major is, if we do the 1550 and if we save 3 million, there's a difference of 3 million revenue, do we still need to make those other?
Mr. Vice Chair?
Decisions.
I'm probably going to be completely wrong, because I should let the chair of the Finance Committee say it, but I just wanted to say, first of all, I agree with you about, we don't want to have to make any cuts. We're making cuts that is going to impact our kids. However, I am under the impression that this is only shaving off 3 million, and we will still have 4.9 million to go, and those cuts would have to be made based on where we are. Am I not correct on that?
Yeah, that is assuming, so let me go back to the, this is all based on the governor's budget that we originally developed our budget off of, so assuming that is the number with it. Excuse me. But also, because we are trying to budget in categories, if a category has reduced, we are limited in, well, we'll just take funds from another category and add to that category. So I think the notion of cuts is a very real notion. This was not something that the administration wanted to do. As a matter of fact, I will tell you how hard we worked to get the original budget request, because you remember, we have done this for a couple of years, and our Excel spreadsheet has been about five or six pages long, and we got the original budget request, which included 1550 to one page. And it really was 1550, three teaching positions, and a few other things. So internally, we had tried our best to work through what can we reorganize, what can we trade off, so that we can take the bulk of what we need to do this year and invest in people. And even with our pay tables, if you look at the original 1550 pay tables, you will see that the percent increases for teachers and those who are on the teacher pay table, as well as classified staff, are in the double-digit percentages. So many are like 10, 12, 14%. And then where the concern is regarding the upper folks on the admin side of it, those percentages were 3%, 2%, 1%. So we really tried to differentiate this budget to put the money in the hands of our staff who are in the classrooms, in the buildings, and our staff who are on the classified pay tables.
Right. Dr. Day?
I think you are right in your response to Dr. Brennan. The estimated total budget of 109 million is based on the city's intended support, which, so for us to function on that budget, we have to come up with 7.9 million in cuts. According to my calculations, to get there with these options, we need every single thing that's on this page, every single savings, and that means, and I'm assuming the 1547 plan, and that includes a school closure, which is at the bottom. Now, I'm not saying that with any degree of glee or happiness, I'm just saying, looking at the numbers, if we are going to, unless you think the tenor of City Council's opinion at this point is going to change, I think we are looking at all of these cuts, unless there's some other potential reduction that we could make that hasn't been thought of yet. That's perhaps unfortunate, and if we really do need to pursue a school closure, that certainly pushes us ahead of where we intended to do regarding the schedule for the facilities I'm just saying that to get to 7.9 million in cuts, we need every single one of these.
Thank you, Dr. Day, and I am going to recognize, I believe, Dr. Gupta, but before doing so, I want to remind us that technically, we have a motion on the floor that did not, does not require a second around one of these proposed reductions. And apparently, the 1547 will get us going. There's obviously at least one person who feels different about the others, even though the reality of what Dr. Day says may mean we have to look at these things. Hopefully, we won't. But what we're trying to do now is to deal with one matter of these potential cuts, so that that direction can be determined about the 1547, and additional work can be done wherever necessary. Dr. Gupta?
I just wanted to bring, and these are known facts, 85% of our budget is human resource, so these are personnel salaries, they are not calculators, computers, or non, you know, intangible items. So, and then 60% of that payroll is SOQ-funded by state, and we got to match for the other 40% from our own pocket, which is 5% of that payroll. So if you make, add those things, there is a gap in the budget going forward, unless you don't give 5% increase to non-SOQ, which is not good. So there are realities in here, which, when state gives you a little carrot for 5% for SOQ, they don't remember that we got 40% of our people non-SOQ. And SOQ are all over the place, there is no average salary. Some are assistant principal, half, quarter, right, Dr. Edwards? Some are principal, maybe 1/4, so adding it all together is very difficult, sitting here and calculating that number. So when it goes 106 to 109, you're counting only part of the piece of the puzzle. It's not counting the non-SOQ which she needs to fund, and this 47 includes that 5% increase recommended or required by the state in their budget.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Gupta. Dr. Carter?
My question is, are there any, are we looking at any potential funds that may be encumbered?
I'm not sure.
Were we looking at any monies that we will not, that we will have remaining from any categories that we have had in the past? How will that factor in?
To make up any difference?
Yes.
Difference?
Any difference.
I think that is a question for the city, since this is the first exploration into categorical funding. So, for example, if one category has enough to do everything that we need it to do, typically, we would bring a recommendation to the school board to make any kind of transfers from one category to another, and that would be the school board's option to do that. You all know that we have done that in the past, when we've had somewhat vacancies and we've had money after, if we haven't had a staff member in a position for about six months, that's six months of money that is sitting there. If there is another need, we've been able to bring that to the school board and move it. The question that still remains is, since we have set categories and set categorical amounts from City Council, I believe it is my understanding that I still have to bring you a recommendation to the board. The board would take two readings, as you have done, to approve it, but then the next step possibly would have to go to the city. The other thing, just so that the board is aware, I know I did this a while ago, but when we were considering the 5% increase, just as a reminder, in the governor's budget, there was a SOQ compensation supplement of 3.4, 3, 3,481,501. And in order to take that full supplement of 5%, we had to, we were required to match it by 2,97,827. So that's over just 5, 5.5 million in compensation supplement and the total match, should we take the full 5% for the SOQ-funded staff members? The governor's budget, if we just look at what was proposed, we are at about 63.8 right now from the state. If you look at the governor's budget, it is 68.1, so that's about 4.2 million dollars more that was in the governor's budget, and that included that 3 million for the compensation supplement.
Okay. Dr. Carter, then, Mr. Tros.
How just complicated and more time-consuming is it going to be to go, going forward with this categorical budget? How much more time and energy is this going to take to manage?
Well, it's uncharted territory, so I have no reference to say how much it's different, so it will definitely be a little bit more time, and it does sort of change the way that we have done things in the past. So for all of us who have relied on certain procedures and protocols, it will definitely impact that. Just us thinking about it as seven separate smaller budgets that we have to balance out is a new thinking in terms of just matching the number that was given to us by council.
And this, in actuality, it ties our hands and really takes the authority over the budget pretty much out of our hands, if every time we want to make a decision, we have to now get the say-so authority from someone else to put it into a different category.
It is uncharted territory, what making decisions, and then it has to go to council for their approval beyond what we've known it to be. Members of the board, Mr. Tros will have the floor, then Dr. Gupta and Dr. Sinha.
I guess I am actually on the same page with Dr. Brennan. I see if you have an increase of $3 million coming from the state, and then we utilize a $3 million reduction by going to the 1547 plan, that's a $6 million of money, so the differential then is what, I thought it would be like 1.8, 1.9 million? What am I missing in that?
The top one is 1547, Mr. Tros, would be 3 million. You see that at the top of the division 15?
Right. But if you're utilizing on this sheet here, City Council's budget of 2024, using the governor's budget versus what actual is?
You're not comparing against actual, you're comparing against our.
Right, I understand, okay.
So, Mr. Tros, just to answer your question, when we built the 1550 plan, and when we initially, when the board was doing its deliberations about the cost for salaries and benefits for the 15, which was the classified section, we had numbers for that, the 50, which were the teachers, and then, of course, the admin, all of that was built on, yes, the 68 million for the governor's budget. It was actually over 11 million dollars to do that, but we reduced it with some internal things, the compensation supplement we took out, and that was built on the request for 47 from the council.
Okay, before we move, Mr. Tros, is that clear? Because I don't want to move on until you're clear on what you asked.
I understand that, but I guess I'm not looking at, I'm looking, utilizing the building blocks as if we're summing zero, starting from zero and moving up, not looking at what we requested. So I guess I don't understand the difference between, I mean, for requesting the 68, the 47, so you're saying we're down to 110, 47, 39, to the 109, to the 106, 3 million. I understand.
Yep. You got it.
You got it. Okay, because we'll come back if necessary. Okay, Dr. Gupta?
No, I've been bringing this up, you go ahead, go ahead. I've been bringing this up for the last few years, and it's left on the side, but I'm going to bring it up again this year. We run a lot of ancillary units in this district, like Laurel Governor's School, where we contribute for their health insurance. This year, that premium has gone up to $384,000. Three years ago, it was $144,000, not accounting for how much are we giving out in terms of benefits for special health conditions. My point is, let the counties contribute their fair share to those costs. What's keeping us holding counties' feet to the fire, saying, come to the table, it's part of your joint venture too. You're a partner, so let them contribute. That'll save us on the health insurance, which is self-funded part, as well as the premium side. And then we are the fiscal agent for all these places. It costs a lot of human resource and finance hours. So how much money will it cost if we start charging them for interdepartmental costs?
Not only the fiscal, but the human resources.
Yeah, that's right.
Dr. Gupta, that is certainly a practical piece. What, there's a process, obviously. What, there's a process, obviously, in order to move forward as healthy neighbors. And so, is there even enough time to do that in a healthy way, to go to groups and, and seek to make that adjustment in time for this budget?
Because what bothers me is we're supplying water to all our neighbors, and my own home, people are going thirsty. You know, we've, we've gone from fifty to forty-seven. So, these teachers in our own school district, we're cutting, but we are funding ventures in other, other districts where they're perfectly capable of sharing some of those costs.
All right. That, that is, is something that's too well said. Dr. Sinha had something to say, and then I am going to bring us back around to the Jermaine motion before us.
I was just looking at some different scenarios. So, if we go, so our decision point is whether to, we know we can't keep fifteen fifty. If we drop to fifteen forty-seven, then to close the gap of seven point nine million, we need to keep all the other cuts. If we go, if we take the middle option, fifteen five percent, we're going to, we're going to cut four point four million, say. And with that, we could keep everything, but we would still have to close a school. Or, we could keep many of the other cuts and not close a school.
Repeat that last thing again, please.
So, so to me, the big picture is, we, where the big savings are, is in the salary options. So, if we choose the middle option, fifteen-dollar minimum for hourly employees, five percent for every, all salaried employees, okay? That's that middle savings of four point three, four point four million. So, by taking that approach, we can keep some of the things that Dr. Brennan's concerned about. We can keep in the community contributions. We can keep in the driver vacancies. We can keep in the programs and services. We would still, however, have to close a school. And we would be twenty-one thousand dollars in the black instead of seven point nine million in the red.
And then after that, you said, if we went to the third option?
If we went to the third option, then I believe we can keep, we can avoid closing the school, and we can keep all of the other cuts, except for central office and the board. So, we could keep the contributions at forty-eight thousand dollars, the, keep the driver positions at two hundred and twenty-two point eight thousand dollars, keep the programs and services at one point one million dollars, and not close a school with estimated savings of two point four million dollars.
Okay.
All right. You've got those options in your mind. Mr. Andrews, you have the floor.
So, I'm only speaking from an individual board member, not as a finance committee. And so, I look at this a tad bit different. So, we have a seven point nine def, million-dollar deficit, and kids are the most important thing. So, we want to try to alleviate cutting anything that revolves around them, but then also retaining and recruiting new staff is extremely important, because without them, it's not successful. And so, coming from the top down, I mean, for me, it's the obvious stuff. It's the school board cutting thirty-four grand. Like, we don't need that. Central office, one point one million dollars. Cut community contributions. Nobody likes to cut anything, right? But cutting community contributions, forty-eight thousand, those unfilled bus driver positions, they're unfilled, so they're costing us money. But if we can get them filled, that's great. Like, I'm, I'm all about getting more bus drivers, but that saves us twen, two hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars. And then the programs and services is another one point three. So, cutting everything, with the exception of keeping, we keep the fifteen forty-seven plan, and cutting all the rest of this stuff, that gets us to five point five million dollars or five point eight million dollars. That still creates a two point three million-dollar deficit. Now, the school closure will be able to close that gap, but that's still a concern of mine. So, I'd rather find two point three million dollars, keep kids in school, and also give staff the raises that they deserve, because we could tease them with five percent, but we're just going to be really playing the catch-up game, right? And so, in my mind, school board doesn't matter, central office, I shouldn't say doesn't matter, but those things are important, right? But if we're trying to tighten belts, these other things can, can be sacrificed for the greater good of teachers, classified staff, and, and kids.
One question for clarify.
Yes, I'm trying to identify.
I'm sorry.
If you have not spoken, Ms. Preston.
Just a question. If we do not do the categorical funding, is there any advantage to be, to the school system being able to allocate funds as they are needed in a more appropriate fashion?
So, in short, that's what we have done in the past. So, just for history, you know, I, I've shared with you how we were able to increase the bus driver pay over the last five years about forty percent. And the, the way that we were able to do that is, once we, you know, we, we, we were trying to get a hundred bus drivers, but once we realized that the actual bus driver people were not out there, we would collapse those positions. We took some of that savings from unfilled bus driver positions to make additional aid hours, or we increased the pay. And we've done those types of things where we've, we've moved the, the money to kind of fit where we need it in, particularly, we got real creative this year with long-term subs, paying our staff. Many folks don't know that, you know, when teachers, particularly secondary teachers, sign on to teach an extra class, giving up their prep period, we pay them to do that. We've paid teachers who have agreed to say, "I'll work with the substitute, I'll grade the papers to make sure that they're accurate, I'll share lessons." So, we've done some creative things to sort of take the burden off of staff, but also compensate them with that. But we have not had categorical funding that went beyond us coming to the school board to request moving between categories.
Thank you, Ms. Preston. And so, as a council matter, the code gives them those two options, and they've chosen the categorical. Is there someone else want to have a follow-up? Dr. Day, then Dr. Gupta.
I was just going to point out, there's another aspect to this that may be relevant that we haven't talked about yet. The budget resolution before city council also includes a contingency reserve of one point nine million. What do we know about what the allowed uses of that would be? Or do we know anything?
Well, to date, I have not received any instructions or a playbook, a manual, or anything about what that process would look like, or what those funds would be used for, or how, under what circumstances, what timing. So, I can't speak to, I can only speak to that they're there.
So, we don't really know the details of that?
I do not know the details.
Well, if you don't, we either.
Yeah, but, but that is go-to money, possibly. Uh, Dr. Sinha.
Um.
I'm sorry, Dr. Gupta.
I was left with the impression, and maybe it's because I, it's what I want to hear, so take that with a grain of salt. But I think it was casually put out there at the council meeting, that if the state is unable to come through with their budget, for example, holding us harmless from the calculation error, which we haven't had final resolution of that. We hear a lot of promises and good intentions, but they can't come to agreement in the state. So, my understanding was, they might pull from reserves, or maybe that's where that contingency comes in, to augment. Now, that could be my wishful thinking. I latched on to that. I'd like to think that city council would try to work with us, but there's no guarantee. So, I think we should just assume they're a hard fix, and whatever they determine that, they're going to decide for us what the contingency is for. Because they're the experts.
That, that, that governing body would be in control. I did hear what you said, though. I did hear that as a, an inference that possibly could be. And again, everything we say in this meeting, as we're saying it, it is giving thoughts to others. And I do want us to know that I think we've had a very good discussion thus far. Dr. Gupta, you would like to say?
You know, city council voted to keep their salaries intact.
They did?
As part of tightening the belt. So, I think as a school board, we can at least do something better and agree as a board that next year will not, I, I have never taken a stipend since I'm, since this thing was initiated, just as a disclaimer. But those who are taking it, I hope you don't mind, and I agree with Mr. Andrews, just take it up, saying, "You guys don't want to reduce your salaries or stipends, but you're willing to cut the classroom teachers and the instruction they are getting. So, at least supplement that by taking out this first item for thirty-four thousand four thirty-eight."
All right. So, go ahead, Dr. Gupta. I mean, Dr. Sinha, a few of them.
So, my only concern about if we take the, the third salary option, which, which is the average of five percent, that that, does that still allow for a minimum hourly wage of fifteen dollars? No.
That would just be, the staff would get an average of five percent. So, you, back in the, the old days, when we would do that, we, some staff would get five, some might get four point five, some might get five point five, depending upon the specific pay tables.
And when does, does, are we up against a, a, a date when minimum wage will go to fifteen dollars? We, that we'll have to adhere to, and how would that impact this proposal?
It's not for another couple of years that it goes to fifteen.
Really?
So, we, we, originally, last year, if you recall, when we started our first round of pay tables, it was sort of a, "We promise you that we're moving in a direction to increase towards the fifteen." And then, of course, with the bigger goal of at least outpacing living wage, we haven't gotten there yet, but it was a multi-year plan. So, we started with brand-new pay tables last year for the classified staff. This year, as we promised that we would do brand-new, brand-new pay tables for the admin staff, we've made some adjustments in nursing staff. So, there's a lot of, yes, one-year work done, but also multi-year planning that we're move, that we were at least moving towards.
Okay.
Thank you.
Dr. Gupta, then Dr. Brennan, then I'd like to move us towards them.
Yes. That's what I was going to say, that there's still pieces of puzzle missing. Dr. Edwards is looking for a direction, fifteen forty-seven or fifteen fifty is a major piece of the puzzle. Let her staff work it through, and when we come to the next meeting, we'll have more detail in terms of what will it take to accomplish that goal.
Uh, thank you, Dr. Gupta, for that centering statement. I would like to hear from Dr. Brennan, and then I'd like to make a statement to move us forward.
So, I just wanted to say that I think, as has been said already, that the, really the major items here that's going to move this number are the, are the salary for our staff, and also what we do with school closures. I think those are the two big, big pieces that have the most money associated with them. Six point nine million dollars in school closures, two point three million. I would just reflect back that we started with the fifteen fifty plan with the hope that we would be able to increase salaries for both teachers and staff, because we know what the problem is with both recruiting and retaining teachers and staff. And, and it's a national phenomenon, we all know that. We have explained that to city council. As an individual board member, I've gone to city council to ask them to do the fifteen fifty because of that. So, I'm clearly a supporter of it. I think it's important. But I think we need to face the reality that city council does not accept that, or does not agree with that, or is not willing to fund us to help us with recruitment and, and retaining staff. And our usual proposal, I think, at this time of the year, with it, with a budget which we did last year, was we wanted to get that five percent raise for all staff based on the state budget to match that. That's what we were trying for last year. And I'll just remind those who were on the council last year that that wasn't an easy sell to the council last year either, but we did get that. And we want to do that again. We want to do it as at least a minimum. I think from what I'm hearing, and Dr. Sinha and Dr. Edwards can help me with this, but if we go and just ask for the fi, not ask for, if we have to do the five percent average raise because those are all the funds that we have to do it, then that will allow us then to not have to make the dramatic other cuts that we're talking about making, and that will bring us back to where we were last year, when we were asking for a five percent raise. So, I just want to say, we've, we have made a good proposal. We know we want our, our, our priority is to retain staff, to recruit staff, to tell staff how much we appreciate them, but I think the same message is not coming from our local governing body. And I think we may need to be considered, the other option, which is to say, "We cannot do any higher," or we're going to end up cutting major programs and/or closing schools.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Brennan. So, I believe as chair, I've given everyone who wanted to have an opportunity, I think everyone has spoken on this matter. I do believe that many of us in this discussion talked about things that were dear to our heart to try to get a feel on what you want to do with the fifteen fifty plan. So, I, I appreciate all of the comments. What appears to me to be before us is a motion from the Finance and Facilities Committee to fifteen forty-seven. So, either that particular motion, we can vote on it now, or if there's someone who wants to make an amendment to the motion coming from the committee, to one of the two other options, and you can get that to successfully then become the main motion, then we can vote on that. Either way, Dr. Gupta's direction is right. We have to give some direction on this fifteen fifty plan and allow staff to go back and look at some other possibilities. What is the pledge of the board at this time?
I would offer, uh, to, so that we can avoid the big items on the table, the programs and services at one point one million, and a school closure at two point four million, to abandon the fifteen fifty plan and go with an average five percent across the board raise. If we do that, and add to it central office cuts, which means cutting some positions, and the meager board budget of thirty-four thousand dollars, I wish we could give more. That gets us, that closes the gap and then some.
All right. Dr. Sinha, I think it would be cleaner, because we can give more direction, but to get clear on the fifteen fifty plan, in my mind, is the cleanest way to do this. And then, anything else you want to, we can bring another motion up regarding something else. Are you suggesting now that you're making an amendment to the third of the listings here, where we would have an average five percent, which would be a six point nine? Is that the one you're talking about?
Correct.
All right. Is there a second to, uh, Dr. Sinha's amendment?
I second that.
All right. It has been moved by Dr. Sinha and seconded by Dr. Brennan, that we make an amendment to the motion coming from the committee for fifteen forty-seven to now switch to a, abandoning the fifteen fifty plan for an average five percent. Is there any questions or discussion on the amendment? Dr. Day?
Yeah, I'm opposed to the amendment. I think, uh, I think we need to maintain our commitment to the reasoning behind the fifteen fifty plan in the first place. I think moving to the just average five percent is putting all these other things on here ahead of fifteen fifty in our priorities, and I don't think they should be. I think the, the, the teachings and support staff is of primary importance, and for that reason, I want to keep as close to the original fifteen fifty as the budget considerations allow. So, I am not in favor of moving lower than the fifteen forty-seven.
Thank you, Dr. Day. Dr. Gupta.
So, I, as I mentioned in the Finance Committee, five percent of thirteen dollars an hour is sixty-five cents, sixty-five cents. So, what you're telling me is, the living wage is sixteen dollars, and now you're going to raise it to thirteen sixty-five. Thank you very much. So, it doesn't make sense. I'm going to vote against it. I'm not in favor of it.
I certainly respect deeply the thoughts that are coming to help resolve this matter. I think there's logic behind it, realism behind it. I'm a fighter, and I want to stay with the 1550. I also am somewhat of a realist. So I would have to not support this amendment because I believe that the makers of the amendment are not suggesting this. I just want us to continue to fight. And that's the reason why I would not be voting for the amendment. Is there any further... Anyone else want to speak? Mr. Tros?
I agree. I made a commitment. I think our staff are, quite frankly, underpaid. We need to be competitive with the surrounding community. We want to retain the best and hire the best. And it's not a fun process, but we did make a commitment. I think that was one of my personal goals. I know that I think the school board felt that way. So I will, I'll be voting against that modified amendment.
Any other questions or discussion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll to remind board members, you are now voting on an amendment to the motion from the committee for 1547 to now be amended or modified to an average of 5%. If you're in favor of the amendment, vote yes. If you are not in favor or oppose, vote no. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
School board member, Ms. Preston?
No.
School board member, Mr. Tros?
No.
School board member, Dr. Sinha?
Regretfully, yes.
School board member, Dr. Brennan?
Also regretfully, yes.
School board member, Dr. Coleman?
No.
School board member, Dr. Carter?
No.
School board member, Dr. Gupta?
No.
School board member, Dr. Day?
No.
A school board member, Mr. Andrews?
No.
Motion fails.
So now we're back to the main motion presented to us from the committee. We have had quite a bit of discussion already. If there are no other discussion on the matter, simply what we're doing now is seeking to give some direction to staff in relationship to this particular portion of the journey. And if you're in favor of the recommendation from the Finance and Facilities Committee of 1547, vote yes. If you are not in favor, vote no. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
School board member, Ms. Preston?
Yes.
School board member, Mr. Tros?
Yes.
School board member, Dr. Sinha?
Yes.
School board member, Dr. Brennan?
Yes.
School board member, Dr. Coleman?
Yes.
School board member, Dr. Carter?
Yes.
School board member, Dr. Gupta?
Yes.
School board member, Dr. Day?
Yes.
School board member, Mr. Andrews?
Yes.
Motion carries eight to zero. Not even, excuse me.
All right. So now that that is dealt with, we have time to have further discussion. Dr. Edwards, based upon what we've done so far, Dr. Sinha has given us clear numbers, others around the board table have given us numbers. What else would you like for us to seek to accomplish tonight? Because I certainly have my own thoughts, even though I will make whatever statement I need to make. I will not be on the board next year, so I don't even know if it's fair for me to articulate any thoughts about what the school board stipend should be. But I do have my thoughts on it, et cetera. What else do we need to do?
And thank you. Thank you for that. Just to clarify, the work that we're, the admin staff will go back and do is take those seven categories along with the numbers that the city gave us, assuming the governor's budget as well, and try to balance that out. But the reduction in the administration attendance and health isn't really as affected by the 1550, 1547 plan because much of that was our classified staff and our teaching staff. Whereas, again, just going back to what's in the admin budget, you have your legal fees in there, you have your contribution and community fees in the admin budget. So in order to really look at that, I do think we need to look at... Oh, and school board is also in the admin budget, sorry. We do need to look at those top two items to see if... And you don't necessarily have to pick an item. If it's a dollar amount that you feel more comfortable, we will go back and just try to retool what we can with what we know. Managing vacancies is always the easiest. Retirements and attrition, also any consolidations that we can do as well.
All right. I think just for clarity, then I'm going to turn it right over to my colleagues. It sounds like, I think I heard the superintendent suggest she would like us to have some discussion tonight, to the degree we can, on the school board stipend and central office. Mr. Andrews?
Dr. Coleman, I would like to make a motion to cut both the school board and central office.
I second that motion.
All right. There's a motion on the floor that we would cut the school board stipend compensation for $34,438. And central office, $1.1 million is...
I seconded the motion.
I got a motion by Mr. Andrews and a second by Dr. Gupta. So we're now at a point of discussion, and any discussion on this motion.
Dr. Coleman?
Dr. Brennan?
So I'm totally in favor of cutting the school board stipends and meals and professional development. We do have a policy that we're supposed to do professional development, so we'll need to come back and double look at that. I want to say one more time, you know, we have, I think, a pretty, very impressive, very effective team of administrators that Dr. Edwards has put together in the last several years. And they have saved us or brought in amazing amount of extra funds to our schools. And these individuals are not being paid high salaries as it is. And I'm sure we'd be easily tempted away with higher salaries. So I do want to say that I think that freezing the department superintendent's salaries is not recognizing what they have done for our schools. And I want to go on record as saying that I think they are extremely valuable, extremely talented, and probably underpaid as they are. So I'd be sorry to see that piece go, but I'm certainly fine with the school board stipend.
And Dr. Coleman? Wait a minute. One at a time. Who... I have a little brain here together. I'll tell you what I'm going to do so that I can keep my sanity. I'm going to start down here at the end and let each board member make a comment. That's going to be the easiest on me. Mr. Andrews, do you have any further statements as the maker of the motion?
Yes, sir. So I think there needs to be some clarification. Is to freeze superintendent and deputy superintendent's salaries? And this is something that both Ms. Pugh and Dr. Wodoka and Dr. Edwards came up with. They constructed this, and I think that, you know, they're not looking at it lightly. And so I want to compliment them on being creative when it comes down to this budget, right? And so, you know, they have put themselves on a chopping block that says volumes to me. So they're willing to freeze their salaries. That saves us $11,000 and then cut 15 positions that are vacant or in or vacant. That saves us $1.1 million. So, you know, I'm not saying, obviously, they're doing an amazing job, but they are in the trenches with us, right? And so I applaud them for everything that they do. And so I don't take that cut lightly, but it's a necessary cut because they've also put it on the block as well. So, and I appreciate that.
Thank you, Mr. Andrews. Dr. Gupta?
You know, as I said in the Finance Committee meeting, budgeting could be nonsense or it could be common sense. So this is a common sense, and the sacrifice starts at home. So I applaud Dr. Edwards, Dr. Wodoka, and Ms. Pugh that they're doing it, setting up an example that they're willing to sacrifice their own selfish interest for the good of the district. So I think this is a good effort. It sends a message out there for people who want to save their own salaries and cut the education of our little kids in the school system, that there are some people who are not selfish, and they're willing to give up their raises.
Thank you, Dr. Gupta. Dr. Day?
I had not, I had no comment at this point.
Yes, sir. Dr. Carter?
I make no, I'm not embarrassed to say that I do take this stipend. And I know that we are a volunteer board, but when you spend as much time as we do, and it's not so much for the money, it's that the fact that you are taking time, taking time away from your job, that leave that you're using, and/or time that you have to put in a different hours of the day or night to make up for that time. And a lot of times, people, you always wonder why there are certain people that are on the board, because it takes, it takes a lot to be on a board. And if you can't, if you don't have the, if you're not independently wealthy, or if you don't own your own company, it's difficult to be on a board. And so, just saying that. And for central office, I hate the fact that you all have to freeze your salaries to do this. And when you look at City Council and other school boards, they are increasing or staying with theirs, and every time we're asked to make a sacrifice, to make a sacrifice. So you're going to keep on getting certain types of school board members because of the way, and it takes gas. Again, it takes time, and it takes time when you're not here because you have to do the studying for the agenda. And then also, it takes time away from your work to go and visit schools. And so, just saying that.
Thank you, Dr. Carter. Dr. Brennan?
I just want to say that I'm assuming that on the central office, the $11,517 represents the 1.5% or something increase the staff had already said they were going to take. You know, we were talking about a 15% raise for first-year teachers. Administration already said, "We're only going to take a 1.5% raise to help teachers and help get what we want with the budget." That amount is $11,517. You know, I would be in favor of including on the central office the cuts of the $1.1 million, which has cut 15 positions or vacancies, but to maintain those salaries because those people are already making sacrifices and showing their dedication to our schools and showing our dedication to our students. They don't need to be penalized for what they're doing for our schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Brennan. Dr. Sinha?
Yeah, I agree. And I appreciate that the top of the administrative pyramid volunteer voluntarily made that effort. I think it does show good leadership, and I appreciate that they've done that because their jobs are going to be much harder with the loss of 15 positions. We have administrators who are not bureaucrats, one which brought in a grant of $10 million. So even if that person's salary were $1 million a year, which it is not, that person has paid for their salary for the next 10 years. Another brought in $6 million. If they were paid $1 million, which they are not, they would pay, they will have paid their salary six years into the future. So, I mean, enough said because what people don't want to hear, they won't hear. So I am concerned about these cuts because I have an inkling of where they're going to come from. And part of our challenge with the great resignation that has followed COVID, the aging of the teachers in the labor force who were planning retirement anyway, who are not being followed by young people going into the profession. There's not enough to replace just the retirements. And nowadays, students leave college with a lot of student debt, so they have to be pragmatic. They can't just go to a city school or wherever they would desire out of the goodness of their hearts. They've got to pay off student loans. So for us to recruit, I think, you know, we're going to be hampered with fewer people in HR. And for us to keep on top of other administrative-type things that obviously are necessary or those positions wouldn't be there is just going to be a challenge for everybody who remains, and it's going to make it difficult to retain them. So I do have a real concern about those positions to be cut. But that is the mandate from our local funding source, and so I guess that's where we are, regrettably.
Thank you, Dr. Sinha. Mr. Tros?
I echo the freezing of the salaries. I appreciate that. That does show true leadership. But I do want to know a little bit more information about the cutting of the 15 positions versus vacancies. How many of those 15 positions are in fact vacant currently? Do we have that number?
Not exactly because we're still in the middle of...
I'm sorry?
I said not, we don't have the firm numbers because we're still in the middle of looking at some potential maybe vacancies.
What are the soft numbers? I mean, if you don't have the firm numbers, give me a range, if you have it. And if you don't have it now, man, it's okay. I don't, but I'd like to, I mean, if we're going to be looking at tough cuts, I kind of like to know what I'm looking at.
I want to say it's probably about half and half at this point.
All right. Okay. Well, I would want to know that information, obviously. I think just to be prudent. But, you know, I echo the sentiment that's been made. But again, I think our staff, where it meets the student is critical, and that's why, you know, if we have to make other cuts, we have to make other cuts and understand that. Difficult decision.
Having worked in central office as a director, I recognize the challenges that some of the folk that we're talking about face, the difficulty and the importance of the roles that they feel as far as taking care of and making sure that we meet the needs of our students until graduation and beyond. And so anything that we do that's going to ensure that we keep in place, and we do have good people in place, and there are also people who would be very desirable from other school systems, I think we would be taking a real chance if we put ourselves in a position of making them feel unwanted or not compensating them to the degree that they need to be compensated. So I think that's something we need to seriously consider.
Thank you, Ms. Preston. Dr. Gupta?
I just wanted to, you know, there was a question about that contingency reserve. My understanding is that a reserve was put in place in case the state comes with a skinny budget. Remember? We looked at the term skinny budget. So in case there's a skinny budget, then the council will kick in another one point. That's the contingency reserve was for.
All right. Anyone else want to have a follow-up statement to what you have stated? I do, I would like to say that sometimes this board has been accused or characterized as an elitist board. And although I will choose not to speak to that, I do see the value in being prepared. And one of the joys of serving on the school board with the current iteration of board members as well as those who have come before us is that these individuals are prepared. They, each board member has had experiences in learning all of the goings-on of dealing with a school division and continuously get that level of training and support to be who we are. And you have a steep learning curve when you are a school board member. It is not a good feeling when you are going to something that the code requires, and you are out in Denver, Colorado, and you go up to the front desk with nowhere to go. Now, you'll be just as homeless as you can be. And you pull your card out, and your card cannot handle what it is that is being asked of you for lodging while you are at something that is mandatory in relationship to the appropriate training. What are you to do? So it appears to me that the only persons who are going to be serving on this school board going forward are persons who are either going to defy the state code and say, "We don't need any training. We already know everything that we need to know about being a school board. We don't need to have any type of fellowship with school board members anywhere. We're going to be an island in and of ourselves and just do what we know and what people who consider themselves to be expert with no training in school division work." To me, that makes absolutely no sense to do that. I also can appreciate that many of us, including myself, have means by which we can function on this board without the school board stipend. But I would want to put some more teeth on this recommendation if it's going to include the school board. to suggest that this would be done only if the members of council will do likewise. There are two governing boards, two governing bodies, and I have argued over and over that the school board is a governing body by the state code and Virginia constitution. And to say that we are second-class citizens for the work often rivaling and more than the work of a member of council. Oh, by the way, there'll be no compensation for you, because you don't need it. I have a serious problem with that. And then, as I argued at another meeting with another body, it is almost insane to say, I'm going to be a superintendent or work in any type of central office anywhere in America with the number of pressures and problems and challenges that you have, and to suggest that we're going to give more work and just keep piling it on and say to people that we expect you to do all of this for less or the same amount. I have a serious problem with that. Cuts need to be made, but the cuts need to be made by council revisiting what they have done. Now, I've said what I've said. That may not change anything. I don't expect it will, but at least I have made my comments. Any further questions on this or discussion on the matter before we call for a vote on the motion that has been made? Dr. Edwards, you'd like to say something?
Yeah, I just kind of want to go back to Mr. Tross's question, and just for the full board. In the current, I think it's about nine million dollars in the admin budget line, there are twenty-two school nurses, sixteen school attendance clerks, at least three BCBA's, board certified behavioral analyst, six behavioral coaches, six school psychologists, some of that is through interns and some other creative things we had to do, seven intruency, one school registrar, and then the six in my office, seven in the human resources office, fourteen in the finance department. There are ten in the student services department, even though many of us think student services serve students, but they are considered in the admin, as well as seven in our equity, community relations, and communications department. So those are, when you look at the admin budget, there are many school-based positions also in that admin budget that we are trying to trim, along with the folks who are typically downtown.
So they're not all bureaucrats?
I don't have a definition for bureaucrats. I know we have nurses, attendants, clerks, and a bunch of folks that are working extremely hard. And if I could just put in a plug as things trend, last year this time, what we heard was behavior, behavior, behavior. And we know just across the country and in the Commonwealth, and you talk to anybody in the medical field or who is providing therapy and counseling, the message is the same about the struggles that our kids have. One of the things that this board has done, and I'm grateful for, is allow me to, through the student services department, address behavior, 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 to the point where we do have staff now doing some creative things with how do we keep the kids in instead of suspending them and sending them home. But also, we do, and I, it does not fall on deaf ears, have a staff that in addition to trying to do that will also write grants to help with behavior, behavior, behavior. So many of, and, and many folks may not know that when we have the bus driver or the bus aid shortage, that the call from our transportation comes downtown, and it is people in our HR department, our finance department, our equity and community relations department that will go ride buses, drop what they do to go ride buses. On the days where we are trying to provide support in a school due to many of the more recent incidents that we've had with, you know, lockdowns, community activity, or school, or, I'm sorry, are losing our students, it is often the human resources department, the student services department, the, the CNI department, and others who, in addition to my office, who go to the schools and provide that additional support. Almost every day, due to the subs shortage or shortage, there is a call downtown where we try to relocate folks who, whether they are supervisors or directors, to just be in a building to provide additional support for the building. Can you work out of that? I, I want to go on record to say that I'm so appreciative of our principals and everybody that works with them to provide that support, but that is one of the things that, as we look at some of the changes that we may have to make, that may be slightly compromised.
All right. I think everybody has done a great job of expressing themselves in a positive way. Then we're going to ask the clerk to call the roll on the motion that has been made that we will have the cuts to the school board and central office as stated. If you're in favor of it, you will say yes. If you're not in favor, you will vote no. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
School board member, Ms. Preston.
No.
School board member, Mr. Tross.
Yes.
School board member, Dr. Senha.
Remind me again, what, what is the vote?
On the, the, a motion to, to cut the school board stipend and the central office amounts as stated.
Yes.
School board member, Dr. Brennan.
No.
School board member, Dr. Coleman.
No.
School board member, Dr. Carter.
No.
School board member, Dr. Gupta.
Yes.
School board member, Dr. Day.
Yes.
School board member, Mr. Andrews.
Yes.
Five yeses and one, four noes. Motion carries.
Say that loud and clear.
Motion carries after four.
All right. It goes that way, and so that has passed. Dr. Day?
There's another possibility to salvage some of the cuts here that people are so concerned about.
Okay.
That would be to close two schools. I know, I can see the laughter and the reactions.
I'm not laughing.
I'm just looking at numbers again, and it would, it would give you another 2.3 million, which would allow you to resurrect some of the things that we otherwise are faced with letting go of. Just a thought. I have not made an explicit motion. I've just put an idea out there.
Dr. Day, you deserve the right to make, and your comments are very intelligent. We are just discussing. And we do want the general public to know, it is not the will or the desire of the superintendent staff or the board to close any school premature to our facility studies and all of the things that we are working on. So I want to make that crystal clear. However, we are trying to figure out what are the possibilities, and we have been put in this position due to the categorical funding dynamics and the decrease in local effort from our city council, our appropriating body, while we still wait what we will receive from the state. And so Dr. Day has the right to say that. It is not that we are going to do that as such. It is not our desire. But we do have to be real and figure out what's the best path for our students and community going forward. All right. Some of you may have tired by now. I do not know. But you're all on the road. Do you want to continue on and deal with community contributions and vision vacancies and other things? Or have we done enough for tonight? Dr. Gupta?
I think let the superintendent and her staff work it through from here on, and before we make a premature cuts to anything and come back. And because as Dr. Brennan said, everything is important, so what's the rush? The city council has not voted on the final budget yet. We're still waiting for the state to fill in there, fill in the blanks. So let her staff, let them, at least give them an opportunity to go back and look at the numbers in light of what we have.
I would tend to agree with Dr. Gupta, but the floor is still open. Dr. Carter.
So what would it look like for the students in the programs? We're talking about CVGS and the STEM and the dual enrollment, because I've seen how the students just so enjoy being part of that. So that means that they will have to pay their own tuition, or we would not fund those?
Yeah, we, we put the total cost that we contribute to the students attending and participating in those programs. Some of them may have MOUs attached to them, which we can certainly dig into and share. Again, not our ideal area, but we wanted the board to be aware of where, you know, where funds are used. And it is sort of counter to the work that we've done. If you recall, you added more seats at the GovSchool. We've added the CTE Academy last year, and even did, and I'm not even sure where we'll be land with this, but did a lot of community collaborative work with both CVCC so that they can get their lab school CTE grant, which benefits us, and also University of Lynchburg, so they could get their lab school grant for literacy at LES, which also benefits us, but there's a partnership that goes along with that as well.
And the second one is cutting those positions with central office. Are any of those the social workers? Or licensed, the licensed social workers?
No. What, what we, in, in truth, honesty, we are really waiting for direct guidance before we start naming positions and people, and because we just, none of this is comfortable, and I do not want to have anyone sitting out there saying they're talking about me, they're talking about me. I will tell you, our strategy is always like vacancies first. And if somebody's retiring or resigning, or that's one area where we would look at, well, that doesn't hurt an existing staff member. While it does hurt perhaps a department if there is a void or vacancy, but that is the way that we are, are going with that. Our social workers are not in the admin budget. They weren't. Those staff that I rec, that I read off are the ones that are in that nine million dollar admin budget.
Dr. Day?
I've already said that I think unless somebody comes up with something that's completely, has not occurred to us yet, I don't think we can avoid a school closure, a school closure. But I don't know that we would need, at this stage, to be specific about which school. We're just talking about a school closure. If we do, in fact, as I expect we will have to, decide to close one, at some point, we would need to make the decision of which one. I would suggest that we talk to Mr. Richards of the MGT Group, explain to him the situation we're faced with, acknowledge that we had not expected them to give us any recommendations before the end of the summer, but that we might in fact need to face that decision earlier and ask him what preliminary assessment he could make about the potential school closures and which ones. Because I think that's relevant information for what we do with the budget.
Thank, thank you, Dr. Day, but I, I do want to remind the members of the board that my best calculation, this is May, and we've already approved a school calendar. It's not a lot of time to make these Herculean decisions without a great bill of, deal of community discussion and unrest. And so I, I certainly hope, once again, the council will help appreciate the value of what we have proposed initially and the pending realities of what we're dealing with. And so, once again, that's a lot of work on staff. All right. Unless someone has something different on this item, we still have other items on the agenda. Are we okay to rest at this point? Council still has one more opportunity to come to themselves. And then we will have to, what is the plan? Do we need a special, are we needing a special meeting?
Well, we definitely have to solve this before June 30th. I think the biggest impact that you've, you've at least solved for us is the 1547 that helps us guide us in terms of contracts, because staff have not received contracts for next year. And it's not just our staff. All school divisions are in the same boat without having the state funding. Some of my colleagues are sort of hedging their bets and giving their staff contracts with pending language related to approved budgets. But at least this will allow us for the bulk of our staff affected by both 15 and 47 to start at least moving in that direction.
Okay.
Dr. Coleman, just one recall.
Yes, sir. Go right, Dr. Gupta.
One piece of puzzle missing in program and services is the virtual academy, because we funded it through coronavirus money.
Right, and because we are talking the operating budget right now, if we shut down the virtual academy, that just frees up CARES money. It does nothing for the operating budget.
So when will, when it's, there's a sunset on it, then they'll become a fixed cost.
Yes, yes. And just to remind the board that one of the conversations was that the amount of support for instruction has gone down. And if you remember, two years ago, when we first received, it actually was after we received COVID, because originally, we were all just looking at PPE and thermometers and sanitizer. Then it became evident that we might see impact in staff. So part of what we could do with the initial CARES fund was to retain staff. You could pay staff salaries, and this board, at that time, decided that it, we could do that because we were also looking at a potential shortfall in our sales tax, but so was the city. And that allowed us at that time to take level funding, retain staff. We were very fortunate that even with our bus drivers, we through COVID did not have to furlough or lay off anyone. We made it work. We made it work with using CARES funding in the instructional realm. So while you may see a decrease in instruction in an operating budget, if you go back and overlay that with the amount of money in instruction in the CARES budget, you won't see that decrease. But that being said, staff have to come back into the operating budget, and we've been moving them back because CARES has different sunset levels or days. And the virtual academy is also that, a group of staff that are in the CARES funding.
Thank you, Dr. Gupta. Thank you, Dr. Edwards. All right. This matter will now rest and tell our next ongoing discussion. At this time, I think we can handle this D1, the HR policy review. Dr. Edwards?
Yep. And the HR policy group met on April 6th. I was unable to, to attend that policy group, so I will turn it over to Mrs. Scott and the board team members that assisted.
Good evening, everyone. All right. So the military leave and benefits, it was a VSB update. Just some minor changes. We added the supervisor payroll. That's who the employee would notify for military leave, and we changed the days from 15 to 21. And that was a VSB update. Any questions?
Are you looking for an action tonight? It's just discussion.
Just discussion. Okay. Next policy is the professional staff assignment and transfer. It was a VSB update. So we will be adding the paragraph. So in this one, we added the date of June 15th. So we want to take out the paragraph where transfer employees must submit an application for employment for an open position to be recommended. So we're going to remove that paragraph and add the one before that. All right. Resignation of staff members. Just some word, they just added some wording there in that policy. VSB update for that one as well.
All right, Dr. Brennan.
I have a question about that. I know there's been, this states that a teacher may resign after June 15th of any school year with the approval of the superintendent. And there's been some discussion in the past about teachers signing a contract and, and not being able to get out of the contract or, or making it difficult for them to, so they would not leave shortly after they'd signed. Is there, is that addressed somewhere else, or is that just a general, general person's agreement?
So that's the code of Virginia.
That, that is what this policy is intended to do, which is why it has a date of June 15th, to prevent sort of a mass exodus before the start of school. So those folks who were issued, typically, we issue contracts in May. So those folks who were issued, typically we issue contracts in May. And then by June 15th, the idea is that schools can go into the summer and start planning for the children without worrying about, am I losing the staff to serve the children? Other divisions throughout the year are very firm with that or to the point where they, if they do release it, I will release staff member A once I have a replacement for staff member A, are some of the strategies. And that's just for their certificated staff.
Dr. Coleman?
Yes, Dr. Gupta?
No, Ms. Scott works very hard. So I'm going to make a motion to make this, make this an action item and then make a motion to approve these things.
Are you saying in entirety, all of the policies?
Yes, sir. Because there are only three changes. That's staying as it is, right?
Exactly. The rest, I'm just going to stay as is. It's just an update for a three-year review. Yes. No more changes.
Dr. Gupta has to make a right, has the right to make a motion. It has to be seconded. I hear a second from Dr. Carter. All right. Any further questions or discussion on the motion to approve all of the HR policies that are presented to us tonight? Here are no questions or discussion. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Scoop up, remember Ms. Trost? Excuse me, Ms. Preston?
Yes.
Scoop up, remember Mr. Trost?
Yes.
Scoop up, remember Dr. Senha?
Yes.
Scoop up, remember Dr. Brennan?
Yes.
Scoop up, remember Dr. Coleman?
Yes.
Scoop up, remember Dr. Carter?
Yes.
Scoop up, remember Dr. Gupta?
Yes.
Scoop up, remember Dr. Day?
Yes.
Scoop up, remember Mr. Andrews?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, members of the board and Section E under our informational items. May 30th, we're proud to know that the law of regional graduation will take place June the 1st. You see the Project Search graduation, June the 3rd and the 4th. Our EC Glass and Heritage High School graduations, please govern yourselves accordingly, board members. Our next school board meeting is going to be Tuesday, June the 6th. And our next work session will be June the 20th. Please, if there's any information that any of you, any of us as board members need to give to our clerk, please do so tonight. And I do want to say to the members of the board and the entire Lynchburg City School Division, thank you for the kindness that you have shown to me and my family during, during the transition period of my mother. This is the greatest school division. I know I'm biased that anyone could ever be a part of. Is there something else that needs to be said? And we do want to thank Delegate Wyndell Walker for his great leadership in the General Assembly and for the recent bill signing and for just being here to hear what's going on. Thank you, Delegate Walker, members of the board. Meeting is adjourned.